The public commission together, uh, roll call please.
Chair Lane.
Here.
Commissioner Whitmer.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Tonelli.
Here.
Commissioner Soklof.
Here.
Commissioner Lamb.
Here. All right, great. So, uh, the, the, the process we have is your public comment section that is related to things outside of the agenda, so things that are on the agenda gives the opportunity for somebody to bring something up. And that's actually what happened on the modicum here, it's somebody rounded up and we did some of the that they are on, on the, on the, uh, animal ordinance. Um, and then, uh, then we have the approval of minutes and the, of the agenda for those of you who see it, there's a couple items on the agenda. So I'll start with the public comment section that for anyone who, uh, has an item they wanna bring up that's not on the agenda, this is the time that you would come forward and talk about it now. All right, am I open to public hearing? And say, you know what, I'm gonna close the public hearing, so I mean, that's very efficient though. All right, so, the next argument is approval of minutes, and there are two different days and two sets of commissioners, uh, that were here, I think is the way it works. So, those of you who are here have gone on, the one that's applicable, those of you who aren't, and abstain, all right? So, uh, let's start with the September twenty-third meeting, uh, meeting of minutes. Uh, there were three of us here for that. And we, uh, I didn't spot anything, but, uh, some people are better at editing than I am.
No, I didn't say anything, so I like the move that we approved the minutes as recorded.
Moved and, moved and seconded, all right, all those in favor say aye? Aye.
Aye.
Abstain. Uh, abstain, ready?
I abstain.
Yeah, they're too essential to approve. All right, then, uh, um, a different group of four. All right, on October twenty-eighth, and, uh, any, any comments or amendments to the minutes on that?
I read them and I don't have any issues, I, I moved, we accept it.
All right, and, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, uh, abstain?
Abstain.
None of the exception, all right, there you go. All right, so we're taking the minutes, we're all caught up in our minutes approvals, and, uh, now I'll go for the, uh, approval of the, uh, two thousand sixteen meeting calendar, that's an item, it's a single page item. That, uh, basically lays out for us the, the year, where you see, uh, uh, it looks like we, did we do it every month this year? Yeah, looks like we have every month, uh, something like that.
With the exception of November.
Only November.
Oh, no meeting, that's where there's no meeting, right.
That's where's the reason.
I, 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 I looked down on it, I just saw the November, but I didn't see, I didn't look over to the right. All right, good, so, uh, anything, and.
Do you need us to move, to accept this, or is that what you mean?
We would like to have a notion, yes.
Yeah, I move and we accept it.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all right, so it's, it's, uh, probably scheduled for next year. All right, so with that, then, uh, we'll go with the, uh, public hearing items, uh, we do the item five A, the heritage tree removal permit at one twenty-four Austin Avenue. Start with the staff, the process we use on this is that we'll do a staff report, and then we'll, then we'll open up the public, uh, comment, and then, yes, I did the process first, sorry. Uh, we'll get, we'll get this, uh, staff update to the board, and then the pu- a public comment section will have the applicant to speak first, and then anyone who would like to speak on the item can speak next, and then we'll bring it back to the, uh, commission for, uh, discussion and questions and action. All right, let's start with the staff report.
Thank you Chair, so tonight you have a request for a heritage tree removal permit at one twenty-four Austin, it's a twenty-two inch Spanish fir heritage tree, it's a non-native species to California. Uh, the intent of this tree removal, per the applicant's, um, submittal materials, uh, is to do with some future construction designs related to the home. Uh, the house is somewhat of a more narrow lot, seventy-five feet in width, whereas, uh, typical standard Atherton lots, under normal subdivision requirements, would be a hundred plus feet in width. Uh, their proposed future home designs, um, uh, have a subterranean parking garage as part of it. Uh, part of the reason of intent of that subterranean parking garage was so as to contain all construction within the main buildable area versus constructing accessory buildings or structures, cool houses, detached garages. Um, so this proposed design has also associated with the subterranean parking garage a semi-circular driveway, um, which is the basis of the intent for the one tree removal. On the left-hand front side of the property, on the opposite side of the property, there's a native cedar, cedar tree, um, that this particular design is attempting to also maintain. By the request to remove the one non-native tree, there's a very robust replanting plan associated, uh, specifically nineteen trees to be planted. Um, of those nineteen, um, there's a recommendation from our arborist that three thirty-six inch box trees be planted within that general front yard vicinity, where the one tree is proposed to be removed, to help mitigate that aesthetic visual impact from the public right of way. Um, and without getting into the details of the value in the staff report, all of the species that are proposed to be replanted are native, um, are native if intent. So, combined with that robust replanting plan and the recommendations for three larger native trees to be planted within the front yard area where the tree, subject tree is proposed to be removed, staff's recommending approval of the application.
Yeah, any questions, staff? All right, then we'll open up the, uh, if you guys can get up, take two, and we'll open up the public hearing, and we'll, we'll start with the applicant, if the applicant's here, uh, it's going to be you guys, all right?
Certainly, yeah.
All right, go ahead and introduce yourself, and I'll take it from there.
Of course, this is, uh, my wife, Judy Neville, I'm a homeowner of the property owners.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure we have too much to add to the staff's very thorough recommendation, but, uh, we'll certainly entertain any questions that you have.
All right, any questions? Good, great presentation.
I'm having to go through the whole presentation, I have the details that I discussed.
I think you did your job.
Both of them, on two presentations.
Would you make a presentation with that?
Room closer.
Yeah, that was, that was pretty convincing.
So basically preserves the original side of the lot, so therefore maintains more of the trees that have been there, preserves the native trees, it also allows for more planting, and also, uh, mitigates any sound and barrier noise to other surrounding neighbors, and it allows for the easier access and more safety features too.
Cool, all right, that'd be a good staff report if there was a child over in here, that's good. All right, super, any, any questions?
Uh, just one question, uh, on the staff report, um, says the property owner stated she's allergic to oak trees, um, and the condition of approval has been added to the draft heritage tree removal cer- certificate. So I'm wondering how that affects your replanting plan?
So happy to, actually I've been skin tested by a board certified allergist in the area, it's not severe, but it's moderate, so I was asking if, in terms of that one, for that particular tree, if we could replant with native trees, but maybe something that's not an oak, or maybe a valley oak that's less allergenic.
For that one spot, is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the other oaks would still remain on the replanting plan?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, thank you, all right, that's, that's it for now, does anyone else like to speak on this item?
Right.
All right, very good, all right, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for discussion and action as appropriate.
I was really impressed with their planting plan, I thought that was, thank you, thank you for doing that, it was terrific to see that level of, of dedication to the trees.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I don't know how to comment on the allergy discussion, or maybe from your standpoint, that's your, your expertise, what you would suggest there, but, uh, do you have any charmed?
And it's in there a list of native trees that I've been willing to work out with her, um, so, and then, and as part of the permit, we can, uh, work that out.
Okay, great, good, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
All right, anything else?
No, I visited the site, I saw the tree, and I can, I agree that, that it's probably good and true to remove it at this time.
All right, good, all right, good, anything else?
I also visited the site, and it's a beautiful tree, it really is, in fact, how did I know we were gonna get these, if I had, uh, Chair Lane, I, I, you know, would have offered this again.
Yeah, yeah.
It just, to me, it seemed like it would just be so beautiful to light up, but I do agree, based on the plan you have for the new home, that, um, there would be damage to the tree, given the construction of the driveway, so I don't have any issue with it.
Okay. Yeah.
I, I move, we accept it.
All right, good. All right, moved and seconded, all right, so, uh, yep, I went to the site, and it looks pretty straightforward to me, so, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Okay.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, very none, no objections, uh, little pass, what a wonderful presentation. All right, good, and good homework too, good, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down, and, uh, welcome to the democracy, this party. All right, uh, let's go ahead then with the, uh, next item, I put my, uh, agenda, agenda item, uh, five B, and, uh, that is the heritage tree removal at twelve Jackson Forest.
So this particular request is also for a removal of heritage trees, specifically three coast live oak trees that are in the buildable area. Uh, for those who didn't visit the site, it is a vacant property, it's heavily vegetated, um, there are, I think, eighty-two trees that were noted on site, of which fifty-three are protected species under town ordinance. So there's a lot of trees on this site. Um, the underlying basis of the intent of removal of these three trees is to construct within the buildable area with the associated intent to preserve, uh, trees that are on the outlier of the buildable area, as well as outside the buildable area. Um, similar to the last proposed future home design, there are no accessory buildings or structures that are proposed in the future construction development of this site. Trying to contain as much as possible within the main buildable area to help preserve, um, the, all of the other trees that are located outside in those perimeter areas. Um, their applicant did prepare, um, a sketchup, which would show if they attempted to preserve those trees, what would be left within the town's, um, allowable buildable area. It's calculated, I think, slightly over two thousand square feet, um, it, they also did some shift arounds, if, if you wanna call it that, if they pushed the house back, what would that result in? That, um, particular approach would result in the impact to a much even larger heritage tree in the right rear corner of the house that is now currently, would now currently be protected under their proposed home design. Again, the home design that is associated with the request of the three trees, um, before you tonight. So, we talked about the fact that there are no accessory buildings or structures proposed, there's also another subterranean parking garage, uh, also similar to our last proposal. Um, the town arborist and myself did go visit the site, uh, I think she's been out there probably on more than one occasion, um, and it did have, does, is of the opinion that with the remaining buildable area of slightly over two thousand square feet, it does constrain the site, um, for reasonable enjoyment of the property. Uh, you'll see that this plan also does have a rather, um, robust, not as much in terms of quantity of trees since the last application, just simply because of the remaining area that will be left, given all of the existing trees that are there. Uh, but a plan that well exceeds the minimum requirements of the town's heritage tree ordinance for the three trees that are requested to be removed. So, with that com- combined, uh, replanting plan, the staff is recommending approval of this application for the reasons as noted, and as more specified within the staff report, so happy to answer any questions that you have.
Do you have any questions, Paul?
Um, yeah, I had a que- a question on one of the trees, uh, Paul and I happened to bump each other when we were doing our homework on this, like, uh, uh, it's tree number twenty-six, the one in the back of it, towards the back of the th- the tree, it's the big one, it's the bigger one that sorta looks like a healthy tree, but
Mm-hmm.
it's, it seems like it's pretty far back, why does that one have to be removed?
Um, if I recall, it is in, it is, it's where the, the house is.
Yes, tree twenty-six is one of the three that are requested to be removed, where the footprint of the, that proposed home property.
Right. Yeah.
Okay. All right, good.
So it is in the proposed structure.
Okay, great, that's, I was wanting to double click on it, it seemed pretty far back for that, but that's.
Yeah.
Okay, but that's.
So is, where that's located, is that actually part of the physical building, or is that a patio area?
Uh, let me take a look at the plans.
Yeah, I was looking at that too. It's part of the physical building, uh.
This is covered patio below.
Yeah, right, it's, yeah, it's a covered patio, right, you're right.
To attach to the main building.
Yeah.
But in the form of a patio, so not the interior living space, but exterior covered space of the main residence.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay. Yep, okay. All right, that's all I needed, um, all right, any, any questions, yeah, all right, good, so, uh, I'll open the, the item for public hearing, and I'll listen, uh, to the applicants first.
What do you think? Um, my name is Humar Sharif, I'm from M Architecture, I'm the architect of the project. And, uh, thanks for the report, um, I just wanted to add a little bit of a context to this design for your consideration. My clients have been residences of the adjacent lot from nineteen ninety-eight, so they own the lot on the south side, they have owned this property for some time now. And when they came to us, their request was we wanna build a house for our family use, and essentially for the next generation. So for them, the site, the property, the trees are all very personal. One of the things that they mentioned very early on, when they brought the program of the project to us, and specific aesthetic requirements, uh, they essentially put three very strong mandates for us, and on the top of the list was keeping the natural beauty of the land as it is, because it is, as, uh, Stephanie mentioned, it's heavily wooded, and there are a lot of heritage trees in the site. We looked at multiple options, coming here and requesting for this application, uh, took, uh, months and months of design and redesign and trade-offs. It wasn't very easy to ask for this application, we looked at many, many options. Um, the mandate of keeping the natural beauty of the land and keeping the trees as many as possible, uh, as soon as hearing that, we engaged the arborist, we, our staff studied the site. Uh, we looked at multiple options, and it got apparent to us with the cluster of, uh, large heritage trees on the south, on the north side. Uh, we have series of them on the east side of the property, and also on the west side. Uh, basically, we did a lot of compromise to eliminate all the accessory structures and try to put everything in the buildable area of the main house. Because, and the basic rationale was anyhow that area is gonna get disturbed, it's gonna be construction, let's concentrate everything into that middle part of the lot, which is more sustainable anyhow to build. Um, as Stephanie mentioned, when we looked at, if we were going to keep those trees, essentially there's no land left to develop. And for developing the program that our client had in mind, then we needed to go outside, what zoning is, is mandating us to do, and potentially removing other, uh, larger trees. So, um, we moved the basement to the, uh, we moved the garage to the basement, so there is no garage over the ground. Uh, we also, uh, concentrated all the outdoor living activities, again, into this area, the area that you pointed out, that has a, uh, outdoor living patio that is covered. It's essentially something that mostly it's part of the accessory structure, but we, again, we put it as part of the main residence. And under that patio is actually a livable space, so it's not a section that doesn't have a living area under it. And again, the reason for that is that because we moved the garage to the basement, so we dedicated a lot of square footage to the garage, we needed to fulfill that program, we needed to come out somewhere. Uh, so essentially the trade-off would be if we don't do it, we need to put the garage outside and go for other trees to be removed. One thing that is very important for us is this tree number fifteen, which is technically it's one tree, but I consider it actually two trees, because it has two leaders, and each one is actually as large as each tree that we wanna remove. So, we pushed the house down, and we tried to stay in the safe distance too. Um, essentially, uh, the point that I wanna make is that we worked on multiple options before getting to this point. Uh, we talked to our landscape designer, and he came up with a comprehensive screening plan. One of the mandates that we had from client was that, because they live on the adjacent lot, and also they wanted to be concerned about exposure to the neighbors, uh, they asked us actually to design this house much lower than the height limit that is allowed in Attleton, so the height of this structure is twenty-four and a half feet, which is much lower than thirty or thirty-four feet that we see. And the other part was just populating it with native species, uh, screening it from adjacent properties and the street itself. Uh, not only for reducing the exposure, but also preparing the land for having the same quality of park-like feel that it has for generations to come. And, uh, tha- that's the genesis of our thinking, and that's what you see in the plans and the application. Uh, we have our landscape architect here, Scott Lewis, and he's gonna add some more information about the trees that are planted for screening.
Okay, I have a question. There's one tree that was leaning in the back, that's a, it's a big oak that leans way over.
I think it's number twenty.
Yeah, that's fine, is that okay, and that's healthy?
Uh, it is. We, our client wants to try, meaning asks us to try our best to keep it.
Yeah.
Okay, good, I just think like it was.
Uh.
You have enough light to remove it.
I know, it just seemed like it was one, it was one that I was a little bit worried about, being heavy and leaning over the other property, but that's, yeah, that's fine, I just wanted to.
Yeah. It's, it's again one of.
Yeah, also, I, I'm pretty sure they own that back property too.
Yeah, so it falls on that.
So then might be less concern.
Yeah, okay, yeah, all right, good, so, all right, good, that's, that's part of the screening, and that's, that's good, all right, thank you very much, go.
Yes. Wow. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
Hi, I'm Scott Lewis, I'm the landscape architect for this, and as Humar has talked about, this site is covered with trees, and that occurs on the property that's to the south, and also to the property to the west. And so, our idea is to try to create that kind of overall forested canopy over, over the whole thing, so, um, I wanna thank the, the planning staff and the town arborist for doing a very thorough and positive assessment of the project. And, um, in the staff report, it's asking us to plant additional oak trees in addition to what we've proposed, and we're, we're totally fine with that. What we'd like to do is use the larger size that was requested, which is the thirty-six inch box, so that's four of, four additional oaks there. Um, relative to the, just, you know, a quick overview of kinda what we are in terms of proportions, this is what the, uh, this is what we have right now. So you can see that the really big guys are in the back, and it's a little thin up in the front, and then you have that adjacent parcel, so the whole concept here is to really kinda equalize it and also get a lot more in the front, and then not just use one oak tree, we're actually gonna use four species, so we have two decidr- or three decidrums, gonna be a valley, black, uh, blue, and then, uh, live oaks. And so to kind of thread that through the whole thing. Um, this is against the, uh, there's a chain link fence over here, so that's just gonna be a straight screen, and that'll be something kind of diffuse where the owner is. If there's any more specific questions, I'm happy to answer that.
All right, great, thank you very, thank you very much. All right, uh, I'll bring it back, I'll pose, anyone else to hear Soklof, all right?
Uh, I'm, I'm the arborist, so if you had any questions for me too, I'm available for anything.
All right, we, we are spending some money here tonight, that's.
That's Atherton, just, just tonight.
All right, yeah, all right.
But if you have questions for me, I'm more than happy to answer.
We're good, we're good, all right, send me the bill, or send them the bill.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, anyone else here to speak on the item? All right, then I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and action as appropriate.
My tenure on the commission is very short, but I must say that this is one of the most considered proposals I have read, and have no issue whatsoever with your request.
Yeah, I, I agree, thank you for adding that, it's great, that, that number, I mean, I took, I counted fourteen here, eight of which are in boxes, six of which are fifteen, and so, that, that's, I think that loss can look great, already does, actually.
Yeah, uh, same thing, I, I appreciate the time you put into the architectural plan, it says eighteen months here, and the different considerations, and also the thorough explanation, uh, answered a lot of questions without us having asked them. And, uh, love the landscape plan too. Uh, I love that tree twenty-six back there, but I understand how it fits in with the overall scheme of things, uh, it's just one of those unfortunate things.
Okay, um, I, I don't have any problem with removing the two trees from the front, but twenty-six in the back, um, I, I don't, it is, it's a lovely tree, you know, I don't. We don't generally, um, take out trees 'cause they're in the way, and I understand the plan is, is really very nice, um, but, um, I don't feel that, that, that it's, uh, that, that we should make an exception on, on that tree.
All right, so, you wanna take, uh, take it in two sections, like the first time, two trees and the back tree, back tree, twenty-six?
Yeah, or. That would be fine.
All right, so, uh, and staff will be okay with that, uh, breakup? All right, okay.
If that's the, or, or the motion, or could make a motion, and you could decide to vote against it based on that fact, so.
I'd, I'd actually rather, I don't know that, unless anyone else shares that same view, I'd rather just vote, take, recommend it, and I'm happy to recommend that motion as it sits today, why, I don't think we're, why create more work for that? If, if there's other people that feel that way, then I, I'm more than happy to do it, but it's, I, I'm not gathering that from anyone else's comment.
Twenty-six is the only tree that I was worried about, I, 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 but in my mind, the trade-off for the, for the, uh, underground, uh, garage, and the reason that tree goes is because of the underground garage, basically, so that, so, uh, I, I, uh, for the trade-off, this one, this one seems to make, make it work, and as long as the arborist is okay with it, that's why I also went on, but that was my first question when I saw the site.
Right, right.
We both had that same question, we've all never done anything.
Yeah, and it's, it's a sturdy jury for this.
Right.
It's a substantial tree.
Right. Right.
But how it fits in after the explanation, uh, I understand.
Right, so, we're ready for a motion, but, uh, this, this time let's use the, the format of the motion, because it, it does lay out some things that would put the, cut the city in a, a good, uh, legal standing, in terms of it would not be contrary to the purpose and intent of the general plan, things like that, that we just won't go on record on this one.
Yeah, okay.
I'm careful. All right. Uh, so, yeah.
Just, uh, moved the planning mission, find that the proposed removal, heritage trees at twelve Jackson Forest in Atherton would not be contrary to the purpose and intent of the general plan.
The three heritage trees, right?
Three, is it saying, three, I'm sorry, three heritage trees at twelve Jackson Forest in Atherton would not be contrary to the purpose and intent of the general plan for the reasons outlined in the staff report, and that the commission approve the tree removals with the conditions stated in the draft heritage tree removal certificate.
Okay.
Well, second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
All right, and, and, uh, abstain, none, so, uh, passed four to one. All right, thank you, thank you to everybody for the hard work, and, uh, you'll be able to see yourself on video, or at least the back of you, on video later in the week.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you. All right, so, uh, wait and try to room clear slightly, all right, so, we're gonna, we're gonna keep going here, so, uh, all. Uh, gang, it's. We're gonna keep, we're gonna keep going out. Hey, will you guys, uh, keep, can you keep it out, going outside, sorry, yeah, we have more business to do, thank you.
Yes.
All right, so, uh, so, uh, so our next item is one of the most popular items we've ever had on the county commission, and that is the, uh, the, uh, revision of the animal cont- oh, the IMC decided to continue, okay, so revision of the, uh, uh, consideration for the, uh, uh, animal control related to the keeping of animals, and this is a continuation from our October twenty-eighth, uh, hearing. So, uh, um, I'll start with a staff report, there was, there was two of us, that, and Beth and I met with staff to go over a framing of the options on this, and so we can, we can go through our thinking about the results that you see here, and we'll start with the, with the staff report.
Thank you. So at your last meeting, um, on October twentieth, uh, that was the second time we would have seen revisions to the an- dra- uh, animal ordinance specifically related to the keeping of chickens. Um, at the conclusion of that meeting, uh, ad hoc subcommittee of Chair Lady, Commissioner Whitmer was appointed to look at revisiting the ordinance, and there were five summary topics that we heard the commission say, please, please look at and address and revise the ordinance. One, um, so having, having some language in the ordinance, um, regarding health concerns, um, human and animal health concerns. Uh, the second was to have a minimum lot size considered that would prohibit chickens, um, for a lot smaller than some determined threshold. Um, to ha- consider allowing different type, a different amount of chickens on, on a scaling, on a sliding scale depending upon the lot size. Um, there was also discussion on considering having more restrictive development regulations for the actual chicken coop or chicken enclosure versus what was previously proposed. Um, and then to potentially scale the coop size on lot area as well. So, with those points of discussion, um, staff met with the ad hoc subcommittee, came up with a revised draft ordinance for your consideration tonight, for a recommendation to, ultimately to the city council. So I'll go through a summary of what those changes are, um, first, specific to the number of chickens based on lot size, there's a, uh, three-tiered approach, um, proposed. So, that three-tiered approach would allow. So, that three-tiered approach would allow for up to five chickens on lots between point five and one acre, ten chickens between slightly over, or, why, over one acre to two acres, and up to twenty chickens on properties greater than two acres. So, there's effectively three with one fourth caveat, um, that would allow for up to forty chickens on lots greater than two acres only if associated with an educational or instructional purpose, and the basis of that particular provision has to do with some of the private schools that currently have, um, to have chickens on their sites now. Uh, there's the prohibition of roosters, um, that was a, um, point that was brought up at the last meeting. Uh, in terms of the revisions to the chicken enclosure requirements, um, the prior version had recommendations to have that enclosure be, um, related to the town's accessory structure building requirements. Uh, the re-, proposal in front of me tonight is, is much, um, more restrictive than that. It would require that the enclosure be within the main building area, but would allow for a twenty percent encroachment into whatever that particular property's minimum side and rear yard setbacks would be, so much greater than an accessory structure, but it could be a little less than the main building area. But there's also a related condition that under any circumstance, that enclosure cannot be located closer than fifty feet to any structure or building on an adjoining property, so that would, would, would trump, um, that twenty percent, um, encroachment sh-, uh, should it work itself out that way for that particular property. Um, there is now a recommended maximum height of six feet for the enclosure. That thought process was to align the structure to the maximum height allowable for fences, um, so that effectively we should not be able to be visible from adjoining properties, and would have a maximum square footage area of a hundred and twenty sque-, a hundred and twenty square feet. Um, that hundred and twenty square feet also will allow for, um, minimum area based on chickens, or, uh, based on some of the recommendations we had heard from members of the public, for minimum area per chicken, both indoor and outdoor. So, um, that was the thought process behind that particular requirement. Uh, some of the sanitary and health requirements that are now included in the draft ordinance, uh, requirements that the enclosure be maintained in a clean and sanitary site condition at all times, does require the runoff of, from the cleaning of the, of the enclosure to be retained specifically on the property, so it can't be washed off onto adjacent properties of a public right-of-way, must be well-ventilated, uh, free from odor, um, that it needs to have containment to prohibit predators from entering the site, which is also a comment that we had heard at the last meeting. Uh, and then we also included compliance with some of the recommended biosecurity practices, as recommended by the California Department of Food and Agriculture. Uh, we kept the language general, just in case those standards ever evolve and change over time. Um, and then in terms of the permit requirements that one would need to get in order to have chickens, they would require to, they would be required to obtain a chicken permit from the planning department that demonstrated compliance with all of the provisions of the ordinance, uh, and also a new, um, new language added in that the enclosure and the animals within it need to comply with the town's noise ordinance, and that would be, of course, on a complaint basis, and would be assessed on individual, um, individual case-by-case basis, so, those were the, the primary revisions that your, that your subcommittee has, um, brought forward to you tonight, and happy to answer any questions that the commi-, commission may have. Uh, just in terms of process following this, depending on the commission's recommendation, staff will bring back, uh, the ordinance as recommended, if recommended by the commission, to the city council for, for class of final adoption.
And is it, will it take action tonight, ostensibly, or continue being, uh, held?
Alright.
Actually, I have a couple of questions. Um, what, how is this, I remember there were some, it seemed like most of this is very similar to what we, we were contemplating last meeting. How, how is this different from that?
Few, fewer, go ahead, you answer.
Um, I, I think the, so the biggest changes, um, have to do with the sliding scale of the maximum allowable number of chickens based on lot size, as well as the coop and enclosure development standard requirements, um, versus what was previously proposed. So, they need to be shorter, farther away, um, in summary.
Shorter, farther. And, and, and also, the very first, uh, uh, rendition we saw didn't have a minimum lot size, and it had more, uh, more chickens on those, uh, lots. So, and it also had a crossover, a, a crossover thing where it wasn't clear what, if you were two, it, it was like two acre and two acre or something like that, but you could go either way, so there was a little bit of an overlap and dissectionation, there was a, there were, there were more chickens on the small lots than were proposed in here. Uh, there, uh, there was, I don't really think there was a specific height limit on the, the, the coop. The coop was defined in this as two items, two elements of it, and ins-, basically inside and outside, as opposed to just a coop. Um, and so, there were, there was, the type of thing would be a clarification and specify the permit. So, ostensibly with the permit, first, you're given, uh, we were talking about, when you came in for the permit, you would be given the healthcare guidelines like we saw in the calendar, alright, so that would be, that'd be like an opportunity to be informed of how to do it properly, and also the guidelines of, of the ordinance, and also it would allow us to revoke a permit. So, by having it, and if there's an issue with sound, or runoff, or other things, with, with the ability to annually read up your permit, you have to stay in compliance, and so, the permit process taxes another sort of, you know, sort of guideline, a safety net, rather than having this, you know, a, a neighbor go three years and never, and never have anybody do anything, because there wasn't enough to do, but it was bothering, bothering.
I think one more point too, that there's now, um, more specification in terms of requirement related to the sanitary and health aspects related to the keeping of chickens.
Yes, correct. Correct.
Actually, I liked, I liked most of the changes, I didn't understand how the nu-, the numbers, I, I actually have a couple of issues. One is the actual number, how you guys came to your actual numbers in terms of the numbers of chicken for each one of those segments, and we have a number of people that are on less than a half acre, getting them to a fifty-foot distance between a no-, a neighbor is gonna be tough. I don't think what.
If they were less than half an acre, well, the way this is written, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
I understand, I don't think that's fair, why, why should that be the case when somebody in Lloyding Park has a thirteen or fourteen thousand foot lot, and then you say to them they can't have chicken, I don't understand that.
The thinking was that the, uh, the smaller sized lots weren't appropriate to both have a chicken, have the, have the barrier for sound, have the, 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 uh, the situation that would set up for appropriate, you know, neighborhood, neigh-, neighborly, uh, usage of the chicken. So, that's why we came up with a minimum lot size of half an acre. So, it, it seemed like that would create the opportunity for more conflict of any chickens, uh.
Yeah, it starts from people in the county and the, and Lloyding Park, I think you can have them on five and six thousand foot lots.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, well, you got, there, you're, you're really on top of each other in, in that scenario, not that that's better or worse, but.
Yeah. Well, we're coming from not allowing chickens, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the, the id-, the, the idea here was.
I think.
That, I mean, here's, here, this isn't our topic, this is me talking.
Sure.
Uh, the, the idea was, um, to come up with a reasonable introduction of this, uh, concept such that people could have chickens legally, and that he would introduce the concept in such a way that was likely to work, and lower the, uh, concept, uh, lower the probability that opening it up would create all kinds of problems, and we get back here talking about revising the chicken ordinance. So, so, it was, it was, it was that balance that we're, I think that I was going for, you, Mary Beth, you can, you can make your point.
No, I think, I think you put it pretty well.
Okay.
In your, um, discussions and your research and your brainstorming, were you able to look at past complaints to see if there was any common denominator, you know, the size of a lot, the number of the chickens, the proximity of the coop to the, to joining neighbors?
Yeah.
To see if there was like, you know, a noise issue m- mostly, or a.
I don't know. Theoretically, there are no chickens allowed, so.
Yeah, but, but we, we did hear that there have been some complaints, and it wasn't clear to me from the public comments,
so. Yeah.
Like if this is widespread in certain neighborhoods, or if it's the one or two random, uh, you know, complaints where you're just not gonna let it go because they simply don't want chickens in Atherton.
Yeah, uh, I was going more on the public, I was going more on the public comment aspect, I, I, where people were talking about the fact that they had made complaints.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Um, and, uh, uh, first of all, the, the, the sound is an issue, and the, and the cleanliness is an issue, and the fact that they have them with the, the rule that they can't. So, those three things is a threshold, there are the three thresholds. So, if we were going to, you know, I mean, this is very easily solved by not having chickens.
Right.
Right, but that doesn't sound like what the preponderance of the, the feedback we had, uh, the committee wanted.
Right.
So, given that that was, it seemed like people wanted fresh eggs, and have the experience of chickens, and, and know where their food came from, and they, and a number of these things, and the, the fact that they presented it in such a way that they, that they presented the notion of being responsible, then the only thing that we had to deal with is, was what kind of framework could be put in so that would help the responsibility? And then one of the key things was what kind of s-, configuration of your storage area for chickens would be, and whether or not that would visually impact somebody else, what kind of, uh, propensity for more noise would you have, and that's where you get the number.
Right.
And then what kind of likelihood of bothering a neighbor based on the space between homes, uh, would there be?
Right.
So, that's where, that's where each one of those elements was sort of a factor in where we came up with the, with the bottom.
Um, I don't think it's this commission's issue to resolve, but I imagine some people will fall out of compliance, right, with whatever new.
Right.
Um, so how, how, how is that going to be?
Complaint, it's very much complaint, everything we were talking about, it's very much complaint.
Yeah. Okay. So, anybody who currently w- would fall outside of this, uh, if there is no complaint, there's, there's, there's no issue?
No, yeah, right, that, well, it, it, well, that, that's put this way, there is an issue, but there's no awareness of the issue.
Right.
Right, so, it would, it's not like we're gonna have a chicken cough.
Right.
You know, we're, what, what? We're gonna, we're gonna have the situation where somebody currently is on a lot size that would then reduce it to five and have seven.
Mm-hmm.
So, are they gonna get two to the neighbor, or are they gonna figure out when those two die, they're not gonna replace them?
Right.
Or are they gonna put them in the country? Yes. So, that, there, there, there'll be an issue around how they come into compliance, and that's where the permit process comes in.
Right.
You know, we basically say, you're saying, I will only have five chickens, okay? Well, that, and I, I signed that, and I have seven, then I have theoretically a startup and I'm compliant, and it's a, uh, it's an opportunity to say you don't have a permit. So, again, without the permit and just the rule about chickens, then you don't have a stop sign. By having the, the permit with a date written down, it, it allows us to have a couple things, first of all, will we be able to have two permits, longer, larger permits? Second of all, do we wanna change the number, uh, thirdly, uh, do we wanna modify it in the future, right?
Right.
And, and so, that's why they didn't go down, that's why height was interesting, going down to the smaller lot size, because I thought that increased the likelihood that the chicken, uh, fl-, uh, um, uh, what do you call it, backlash, was higher probability.
So, um, with regard to the permitting process, is the permit based on the fact that a resident wants to have chickens? Or do they have, do you have a permit for each chicken, or do they have to have a permit for the coop, what, what is the permit?
You, you can speak to that, but the way I, the way I envision it is that they ask for a permit to have, uh, chickens.
To have chickens, period.
And then their lot size determines how many they can have.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And there's the requirement, if you're going to have chickens, you need to have this enclosure, so, by matter of fact, you would be getting the permit for the chicken and for its enclosure.
And, uh, we don't anticipate basements on the, uh, group.
Not now, but a chicken refuse, you know, so.
No, I know, but that'll come, that'll come, yeah. Uh, and we don't, and raccoon getting the food, and daughter chasing the, yeah, the whole thing. Yeah, so, uh, you know, there's, there's a number of things that, as I talk about this to people at work and, and in life, uh, I'm amazed at how many people know about chickens, and how many chickens are in San Jose and in Houston.
That's, that's, right.
You know, it's like, it's like one of those things, you can have an animal, and you find out everybody else has that, had that animal too. It's like, oh, we gotta let you know what our chicken story is. You know, we had some dog breaking into the backyard, chasing chickens around, yeah, so, I mean, so there, there's an opportunity for failure here, and we're trying to mitigate that, that failure opportunity a little bit.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Now, you guys, actually, I would give you, uh, yeah, I, I kudos on it, 'cause I do think it, it clarified a lot of it, the, the fence made sense, the, you know, I, it, it is great, but I don't think we wanna open it up or recreate it, it has to hurt the place.
But it's well thought out.
And neighbors getting after each other, that's the last thing we wanna do.
Right, right. Right.
But I, I think it's good to have flexibility, I, I do, the only thing, it doesn't sound like anybody else has to issue, but I do feel for the folks that, and, and, and we have quite a few lots that are under a half acre. I mean, we probably have, what, a hundred, I mean, twenty, a hundred and thirty lots that are under a half acre, so, you know, that old Arma, Bee's, the guy in Lloyding Park, or, yeah, Lloyding, you've got some of these back in here, uh, that would be my only one, otherwise I, I, I think it's right.
The thing is, you know, this is a closed door, it can always be amended going forward, if you find that there's a huge surge of people and there's a, you know, half acre chicken movement.
Right.
Sure. Sure.
Right, right.
Go that way.
Yeah.
Something about we're sitting there.
Yeah.
That's right, yeah.
Hashtag chicken on the ground.
Alright, alright, and, uh, any other comments, questions, clarifications?
That's great.
Mary Beth and I, and, and Stephanie were, uh, slaving over a hot chicken, uh, uh, yeah. No, I, I knew she was a very good meeting, it was very, very straightforward, we, we had, we both, we all had framework around how we were thinking about it, and each component, and it was very, very good, uh, very good session.
You're on the chicken ad hoc committee.
Alright, keep your day job.
I'll make the noise.
Alright.
I move that the planning commission recommend the city council adopt the ordinance entitled and ordinance of the city council of the town of Atherton, amending chapter six point zero four of the Atherton municipal code.
Can I second?
Move in second, all those, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Alright, yeah, yeah, alright, good, and I know we got our minds right about legal because it has the appropriate, uh, spattering of your body here in such structures, now, so we're, we're officially legal now, there, there was no where else, so it's really a big one. You can only, you never see those words anywhere else. Alright, so.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Alright, so we have, we have a couple more items, commissioner report, commissioner report.
Uh, the, um, uh, civic center advisory committee, we have a meeting November second, November sixteenth, we'll have another one December seventh, um.
As per Harvard date, I think so, not.
I know. Uh, we're in the, uh, well, in the design phase, and we're kinda tweaking things before things kinda go to council. There's gonna be a push at the beginning of the year, you might get an email from me or somebody else in the commission, uh, but there will be a lot of community outreach beginning, um, or we'll start planning in January, the February, March, maybe a lot of community outreach with, uh, the plan that's gonna be out there. There's been a lot of time spent on things being moved around, but, uh, we're very happy with what the architect is doing and what they can do in place. Um, I can give you a thumb, thumbnail sketch of it right now, the police department's gonna be in the, uh, real east of the park, the park, like, here, back in Atherton, the, uh, uh, the train tracks, with their secured parking behind the building. Um, there'll be an entrance on Fair Oaks, at least this is, the design is coming up right now, um, with kind of a U-shaped campus there and a courtyard that kinda extends out into this open area. Um, there'll be an entrance on Ashfield that will, and a lot of this is online already, uh, that will make a left almost where the existing police department is now, and kinda continue on toward Fair Oaks. There'll be some front end parking, uh, off of Fair Oaks, so people can do their drop-in business at the post office and things like that. This building will remain the same, it'll be repurposed, and, uh, the library, of course, will be redone, and almost kind of a piano shaped building back into the park area. So, there's some, yeah, things we were talking about as far as landscape issues, uh, our meeting December seventh will kind of finalize things a little bit, and then, uh, uh, we'll start with the, uh, with community workshops in, uh, late January, February.
And start writing checks, is that what you?
Well, uh, that is, I, I'm not part of the finance committee, or, um, but we're, we're hoping to have a, a clear enough image that, um, we can encourage some people to open their checkbooks a little bit.
Right, cool.
So, because it's gotta all be private finance.
Okay. Alright. Alright, anything else, if, anyone else?
Thank you for our.
Okay. Oh, you know, I went all out, you know, it says, if you look for a coffee, it says Tiffany's.
That's too excited.
And there is, there is a staff report, and, uh, that's, uh, is another party potential.
Yes. Yes, so, um, the town has recently been contacted, um, for, with a request for a helicopter landing permit, you probably haven't seen one in a while, if ever, so, the. So, the process that our, the town's ordinance does outline.
The one time?
It's a one time, it would be a one time event. It does require a use permit, a use permit to be issued by, ultimately, ultimately by the city council, but it requires planning commission review and recommendation beforehand. So, the intent of this helicopter landing is for Joe Montana to land prior to the Super Bowl for a speaking engagement. They have a targeted date of February sixth, so when we backtrack looking at regularly scheduled meetings in order for this particular project to hit the January council meeting. If the council is to approve it and have them meet their target February sixth date, we would need to consider holding a special planning commission meeting in early January to accommodate that request. So, I am asking tonight if there are the minimum of at least three commissioners who would be willing and available to hold a special meeting in early January of twenty sixteen to consider a use permit for a helicopter landing permit. We'd be looking at likely the fifth, sixth, or seventh of January, fifth being a Tuesday. We would probably shoot to target at the same regular, regular time of six P M, if that worked for the individuals. So, that's about all I know in terms of the permit specifications.
Where's, a little piece is where's the landing? Certain club or?
Um, that I don't know, I don't know. I wasn't sure.
It has to be certain.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, it, it probably would be, or I mean, or school or something, yeah.
You need to make trees around it anyway, you need a big. And.
So, we would have thought that, obviously, they would be submitting a formal application, they, this is all just, this is all just.
Who's, who's actually applying for it?
That I don't know either.
What do you know?
They wanna land a helicopter, um, February sixth and that, that's the process.
The one thing, the one thing is we need a public hearing to be able to get the items set, so we really can't know a lot here because it's not a public hearing.
Yeah, exactly.
It's a, a request for a count, it's not a public idea.
To get all the details.
Otherwise, it's not enough a public hearing.
Right.
Alright, so, so.
I'm fine with it.
You know, I'm fine with it.
Maybe there's.
It'll be interesting.
I know states are, okay.
If Obama wanted to, uh, uh, come in, then we probably, people would probably have a problem, but Joe Montana probably wouldn't have a problem.
I think he needs a permit.
Well, apparently can't have a party, so, I'm still burned over that. Alright, so.
We're dealing with real problems.
Yeah, okay, so, I, I'm open those.
Is there a preference?
Is there, is there a reason why you couldn't just have the January meeting on the same night or is it because we're technically supposed to be having these meetings on the fourth Wednesday of each month?
When they're set, that's why there's a motion and you approve it, it's just for convenience of the public, nobody meetings are.
So, you could.
We could go and amend or that, so you guys, we could, if you only wanted to have one, we could amend it.
Probably they just dropped it at the counter, right, for, for, for January sixteenth, so you go that range, you could.
We could just amend it, we could just amend it and say, hey, it's gonna be January seventh instead of January whatever, or I, I don't care, if everybody wants to get together, I'm fine with that.
That might make the February meeting really heavy, right?
Yeah.
Because you'll have backed up.
I know that, like when staff meets, they sort of have a, ongoing, they try to space things out nicely and there are things that kind of tie in, so I think of this relatively late hour, which I know sounds silly, but, um, if there was some kind of playoffs, you know.
I'm fine with that, I mean, I just thought if everybody wants to own it, well.
Yeah, I don't know that I'll be here, my daughter's having surgery in early January and, and, I don't know. It, it's not, it's not formally, you know, the date hasn't been set, but I know it's early January.
Yeah, and so, January sixth, there's a city council study session from four to six, so we could just roll into it right after.
Oh, so the staff, are you?
And I don't, yeah, yeah.
You, you already have.
Bill's, Bill does those study sessions.
Oh, right. Good.
But you're here on the sixth, but not the seventh, yeah, not the seventh.
Alright.
Alright, fifth and sixth work twenty six, works.
January sixth.
The sixth still by the same.
Eighty two.
Yes, it is.
It's the same.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
But at six?
Yes. That's all.
That's all we're gonna do with that, that, that session, theoretically, we could add something else to it if something came up, I guess, with all these notes, but right now it's only gonna be about helicopters. So, just. Yeah. Alright, alright, any, any other staff report item?
No.
Okay, and item number eight is always a tough one. The, the motion.
Second.
A motion is second, all those neighbors say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're outta here.